The Governor of the State of LNI has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to COVID-19 outbreak and all of the villages of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the May 5, 2022 village board meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the May 5, 2022 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meetings. Signed, Chowdhury Maakooker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights dated May 5, 2022. I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2022, to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the saying of the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is opening prayer by Glendale Heights Police Department Chaplain Tim Perry in honor of National Day of Prayer.
In all of our faiths, we are called to understand that we are rooted in faith, we are blessed by faith, and we are to become stronger in our faith. I'm going to pray and I'd ask that you call upon your own faith as I pray in Jesus's name. Bow your heads and close your eyes, let the day fall off you. Lord, today we are grateful that all of us in our unique lives, jobs, and beliefs, and most of all, our passion for our life, gives us freedom to pray. Forgive us for trying to dismiss you from our lives, our schools, our businesses. Be with us to become stronger in our culture so that we don't become cultures of chaos. Help us, Lord, understand gratefulness and let us usher in faith every day. Stronger together, almost home. Amen.
We now move to be petitions and communication, community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Thank you. With the arrival of the spring season, the village of Glendale Heights, along with the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, would like to remind residents that it is unlawful for any uncontrolled burning of landscape waste. Fires in approved containers like fire pits are allowed as long as they are at least 15 feet from any structure, including patio sets, fences, garages, and houses. For more information, please contact the Glen Side Fire Protection District at 630-668-5323, or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District at 630-894-9080. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, May 7, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui?
Did you know Republic Services offer free electronic recycling available for all Glendale Heights residents? On the second regularly scheduled collection day of each month, Republic Services will collect electronic recyclables with your regular garbage and recycling collection. In order to have an item collected, you will need to contact Republic Services at least 24 hours in advance. Your electronic items should be kept separate from other waste or for curbside pickup. For a complete list of acceptable items, please contact Republic Services at 847-981-0091. Now that spring is here, the village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit include work on decks, sheds, patios, reciding of your house, and re-roofing. For a complete list of projects requiring a permit, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/calmdev/buildingPermits. We would also like to remind you not to pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure all work is up to code. If you are not sure if your project requires a permit or not, if you need to apply for one, please contact Community Development Department at 630-260-6030.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On Monday, May 30, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Park Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving our country. The Glendale Heights BFW Post 2377 will conduct a fallen warrior ceremony, followed by a solemn wreath-laying ceremony. This includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute, and patriotic acknowledgement. If you're interested and available in volunteering to help plant American flags on Thursday, May 26, at Veterans Memorial Park, please visit the village's website at www.glandalehighs.org. Each flag represents a fallen soldier from Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom, Afghanistan. In observance of Memorial Day, the village offices will be closed on Monday, May 30. For more information, please call David at 630-909-5348. The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks and Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime while working for the village Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr, or contact Human Resources at 630-909-5357. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Maritato?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Village vehicle stickers renewal applications will be mailed out May 13. The new village stickers must be displayed by 12:01 July 1, 2022, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15, motorcycle tags are $12, recreational vehicle stickers are $18, and trucks with a B plate are $25. There is no additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weight. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding vehicle stickers, cost 630-260-6000. During the remainder of May, park restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed on Mondays for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak?
National Police Week begins Sunday, May 15, and runs through Saturday, May 21. To commemorate this week, the Glendale Heights Police Department will be handing out blue ribbons for residents to put on their vehicles as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty, and to show support to law enforcement officers protecting our streets. May 15 is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and we hope you will fly the blue ribbons on that day as we honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their communities. Blue ribbons are available at the police department. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, not emergency number, at 630-260-6070.
Mary Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Summer is just around the corner, and the Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May 28. Purchase your pool pass now through May 22 for discounted rates. Benefits to becoming a member include priority entrance at 11:00 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Number two, we have the following proclamations. Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Number three, a proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. Number four, a proclamation to proclaim the May 5, 2022 as National Day of Prayers. Number five, a proclamation to proclaim May 13, 2022 as Falun Dafa Day. Number six, a proclamation to proclaim the May 17, 2022 as Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. Number seven, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 15 to 21, 2022 as National Police Week. Number eight, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 15 to 21, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Number nine, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 15 to 21, 2022 as National Public Works Week. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations.
No objections.
Okay. So, we now go, I will sign, okay. Next, we now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items? None? You have the consent agenda before you would, acting village administrator Doug Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Finally, a short one. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of April 21, 2022. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes, April 21, 2022. Three, approval of the council payable listing, May 5, 2022, in the amount of $2,299,471.68. Four, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the preparation of grant applications for the Armity Creek Rehabilitation Project reaches 12, 13, and 14. Five, approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I need motion, trustee Pat Maritato, and second trustee Light.
Thank you.
Discussion. Now, the consent agenda is approved. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. All business. Number one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, for planning technical assistance services for the development of a bicycle and pedestrian plan for the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, table at the April 21, 2022 meeting, RES 2022-R-48. Is there a motion to remove this resolution from the table? I need motion? No. Okay. Trustee Pat?
Make a motion to remove it from the table.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee Light, second. Discussion.
No, there's no discussion, just a roll call.
A roll call vote.
Okay. Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
This resolution is removed from the table. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-R-48? Any motion for that? Trustee Pat?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee Light, second. Discussion. Yes.
Doug, can you run this by the board?
So, this was tabled from a board meeting last. This was the presentation to, for us to have a plan in place for bike and pedestrian paths throughout the village. It was an engineering study put on, approximately $100,000 of engineering work. Our payment for that is about $15,000, an in-kind payment to CMAP, but it's for a plan for the future to have bicycle and pedestrian paths and roadways throughout the village.
Anyone else? Roll call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
No.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
No.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
No.
No, so it's a 50%, I will go with yes. Resolution 2022-R-48 is approved. New business. There is a request to waive first reading on new business items 2 to 4. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 to 4? First, you may marry.
So moved.
Second, trustee Light. Discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business items 2 to 4. Number two, an ordinance to amend section 4-3-13 entitled "Number of Licenses of Chapter 3" entitled "Liquor Control of Title IV," entitled "Business and License Registration of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights," LNI. Sabrina's first reading is waived, this is ordinance 2022-37. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-37?
So moved.
Trustee Light and trustee Pat, second. On discussion. None, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-37 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to waive bid and authorize the purchase of one Ford Transit cargo van for the village of Glendale Heights, PWO unit number 654. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2022-38. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-38? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Light, second. Discussion. None, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-38 is approved. Number four, an ordinance authorizing the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program. First reading is waived, this is ordinance 2022-39. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-39? Trustee Pat, deputy mayor Patina.
So moved.
Second, trustee Light. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Pojak?
Who do I address this to?
Doug's.
Doug?
No. Go ahead and I'll redirect if I need to.
All right. What are the borrow funds for?
I believe, as a Ms. Richalino.
Oh, well, it's between myself and them. So, this is to borrow funds for the phosphorus project. This is the loan agreement to apply to the IEPA for a phosphorus removal project that's planned in the next two years.
How much are we gonna borrow?
It's approximately 9.5 million.
How much?
9.5 million.
And it's gonna take two years to complete, then?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
It's a 20-year loan repayment as well, so it's, we get to pay this over time, and the interest rate is really, really low.
Oh, okay.
Like, almost free.
Can't beat that.
No.
I just wanted, man, I just said, maybe this sounds foolish, why aren't we taking it out of the general fund? And this way we have to pay no interest.
Oh, he's a one.
And we're certainly not getting that much interest on our money.
Bill could explain better, but it would deplete our general fund reserves, and right now our reserves are pretty healthy, and we want to maintain them as being pretty healthy. And a 20-year repayment at a 1.5% interest rate really is a really good deal for us, I think, to move that project forward and get it moving forward and not hurt the overall finances of the village.
And as it just so happens, trustee Schroder, the debt service schedule of the environmental fund is set up where in just another couple of years, there's two significant borrowings that the village took out in 2009 and 2010 that are falling off the books, and the principal and interest on those two bond issues are just about the same as what this nine-and-a-half million dollar loan would be. So it's almost neutral to the fund.
Thanks, Bill.
Of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-39 is approved. We now go on the public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items? None, and there is no executive session, and I need motion to adjourn. Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
And trustee Schroder, second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Pojak, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to call this committee at a whole meeting for Thursday, May 5, 2022, to order. Would the clerk please note who's present?
So noted.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Mike?
I'm the only one?
No, there's another one coming.
Oh, go ahead, I'm just, oh, go ahead, Mohammed.
Mohammed?
Yeah. Status update.
Okay. The status of?
Yeah, status, you can just put status.
Status, okay. Mike?
Oh, me? Sorry, comments? Comments?
Comments.
All right, very good. Anybody else? No, that's it. Okay, discussion reading regarding presentation of NIU Center for Governmental Studies regarding the Glendale Heights Community Service. Doug, are you gonna handle that one?
No, actually, we have a guest speaker from NIU.
Oh, okay.
Hi, ma'am.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight to come talk to you about the community survey that's being conducted for the village of Glendale Heights. Let me share my screen. Do you have a presentation?
Can you please present your name, please?
Minji Schneiderman. Okay, I'm gonna talk to you tonight about the methodology that we're using for this community survey, and explain what exactly we're doing, and at the end, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions. So, the background and purpose of the survey, first of all, the purpose of the survey is to gather residents' opinions of living in Glendale Heights, village provided services, and the areas that the village should focus its attention on. The results will be used for strategic planning, it's part of the bigger strategic planning project that the Center for Governmental Studies is doing for the village. The survey that we're doing is what's called a multi-mode survey, so we're using different methods to reach the residents. There's an online version of the survey, there's a mail version of the survey, and then we are going to do telephone reminder calls. Go into more detail about that in a few minutes. So, the questionnaire has 56 questions and covers a variety of topics such as quality of life in the village, importance and satisfaction with services, priorities for the village, parks, recreation and facilities, village communications, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the village, and economic development. And lastly, there's a section that asks for personal and household characteristics such as age and gender of the respondent, annual household income, how long they've lived in the village, where they live in the village, et cetera. The questionnaire was translated into Spanish, so it's in English and Spanish. And the survey recipients, so we selected a random sample of 2,500 households and a random sample of 500 Latino households in the village of Glendale Heights. We used an outside firm, which is called Marketing Systems Group, they are a survey sampling firm. The only thing they do is pull samples for surveys, and they're located in Pennsylvania, so that they handled the random selection and the additional, what's called the oversample of 500 Latino households. The list or sample was the survey recipients. We have names of individuals, we have mailing addresses, we have telephone numbers, and we have email addresses. Data collection has already started. We sent an email invitation to participants, or the residents on the list, and the email invitation said, explain the purpose of the study, you know, that it was being sponsored by the village of Glendale Heights, who to contact if they have questions, which is myself, and a variety of other information. And then there was a button that they pressed to begin the survey, this is the online version, and that was sent out April 18 of this year. We will send up to six reminder emails to households that don't respond. We're getting a fairly good response at this point, but we will send six reminder emails to those that don't respond, and then we go to the mail portion. So, anyone that doesn't respond to the online survey, they then get a questionnaire mailed to them with a cover letter explaining the purpose of the survey, and they have the option at that point to either go online, we'll give them their password and the online link to the survey, they could do it online, or they can mail back the questionnaire, we'll data-enter it. And then- And then lastly, we do what's called reminder calls, so if they don't fill out the online survey or the mail survey, we call them. Uh, and we call everyone that hasn't responded, uh, and we then, again, give them the option, we, we will mail another questionnaire to them at this point, if they lost their questionnaire, can't find it, uh, we can give them their password and the link to the online survey if they rather do it that way. Uh, we will text them the link to the survey, we give a lot of different options. We will even read the survey questions to them over the telephone and take, uh, their responses down, especially we get people that say they have difficulty, uh, reading, uh, a- and so we will actually read them the questions and take their responses down if need be. We estimate we'll get about five hundred completed surveys, uh, possibly more, hopefully more, I should say. Uh, and the margin of error for the survey is plus or minus four point two nine percentage points. The data analysis, uh, the w- once we get all the data, what we do is we weight the data using the American Community Survey, which is done by the Census, uh, the US Census Bureau. It's done every year, we use five-year estimates, uh, we take the demographics from the American Community Survey, and we take your survey respondent demographics, we compare them, and then we weight the survey data, so it's representative of your, uh, adult population. Then we do frequencies of all the, the closed-ended questions, we do cross tabs of all the closed-ended questions by key demographics. So we'll look at questions by respondents' gender, age, race, ethnicity, annual household income, households' location in the village, years living in the village, for, just as examples, but we, we, we will do more analysis than that and look at, to see if there's statistically significant differences between demographic groups, uh, in their responses to the questions. And this provides a, a lot of detailed information, uh, that you don't get by just looking at, you know, how many people gave each response to a question, uh, but analyzing it by demographic variables. And lastly, we analyze all the open-ended response questions, uh, using what's called content analysis, so we look at key themes or categories coming out in the open-ended responses. That's the methodology we use, we've been using this methodology for about six years now, it works really well for us. We get a very representative group of respondents, uh, because we follow up so many times with them, the reminder emails, the mail questionnaire, the reminder calls. So, we, we don't get just that first group of respondents, what we call the, the people that are, they're easy contacts, basically. So those people that, that wanna respond to the survey are the ones that respond first. It's those that are hard to reach, hard to contact, that you have to really follow up with, and by using the methodology we do, we get a really representative group of respondents. It also, the methodology allows respondents to complete the survey using their preferred method, so if they don't wanna do the survey online and give out information online, they can mail it back, uh, so, so you, they have options. We've received questions about why we do a sample rather than a census, why we, we don't send the survey to everyone. Uh, there's a number of reasons, uh, first of all, the cost is, is prohibitive. Basically, if we were to do, I think there's like close to eleven thousand households or maybe more in the village, uh, it, it would be about double the, the, the cost. Uh, the amount of time it would take, uh, would be probably double to get all the responses and follow up with people and get a good response. And even the census, uh, but, uh, they do the census every ten years, it takes about two years from start to finish, actually, to, to do the census. And in between years, they do the American Community Survey where they use a sample. And we tell people, you know, that basically they're represent, you know, they should complete the survey 'cause they're representing other residents in the community, they've been, you know, randomly selected to represent everyone in the community, in a sense. Lastly, it allows the results to be generalized to all adults in the village of Glendale Heights, because with sampling, you can weight the data, like I said, by, by the demographics, and then you have a, uh, you're able to then generalize your results to all adults in the village of Glendale Heights, so that's why we use sampling. And, uh, are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mohammed?
Yeah, I have a quick question, how many people you are targeting, is it, I believe it's six thousand? Is this correct, or?
I think it was, wait, hang on a second, I have the number here. Twenty-five hundred households plus five hundred, so three thousand households. Now, you have to realize that we, there are some households that no one, that is, are vacant. Uh, people, you know, moved out and nobody's moved in yet, there's households that we're gonna get undeliverable addresses, undeliverable emails, uh, you know, bad telephone numbers, et cetera. So, so, when, when we say, people say, well, you know, out of three thousand, you're only getting five hundred completes, well, actually, it's less than three thousand by the time we take out. People refuse, we get refusals, uh, they wanna opt out of the survey, uh, you know, so all, after we take all those out, it's less than three thousand households that really.
So, out of how many, how many households we have in this village?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand, okay. So, basically, around twenty-five percent you are targeting. Uh, my other question is, let's say the pers, you sent an email and you don't get a response, so you are going to s- reminder email and you don't get a response, so you're going to send a, mm, by mail to the same household?
Yes, correct, so we have.
Why is that? Why don't we just move on to other household, because it clearly tells you that the person is not interested? Why waste time and postage sending again? And maybe it's a human nature, if you are going to force me, I'm just gonna say no. You know, why targeting the same household?
You we wanna try to convince the person to, or the household to complete the survey. So, may, they might not wanna give out information online, they might prefer to do a, uh, mail survey. Some people don't have internet access. So they have to do a mail version, everyone has an address, not everyone has, uh, an email, you know, has a mailing address, not everybody has an email. So we try to reach as many through the email, because that keeps the cost flat down, we don't have to print and mail as many. Uh, but, uh, but, but it's different ways of reaching the same household. And eventually, we get people to respond. They might take a reminder phone call, that's for some people, it's like, oh, yeah, I forgot to do that survey, yeah, I know it's due, you know, the, the cutoff's next week, I better get that in, but, but it'll take a reminder phone call. So we're reaching those people that wouldn't necessarily complete by, by doing all these contacts with them. Uh, so we're reaching those people that, that we call hard, hard, hard-to-reach individuals that might not have completed the survey. So you're not hearing from the same, what happens is, you know, those people that really have something to say are gonna send it back right away, are gonna complete it right away, and you always hear from those people. It's the people that don't, you know, that you don't hear from that we wanna reach.
My other question is, uh, out of this three thousand, what would you call a, a successful response? Which you get back?
We're estimating five hundred completes, and that's, that's based on past experience. Uh, if we get more than five hundred, we will be very happy, uh, but with surveys nowadays, uh, a twenty percent response rate is very good.
So.
Unfortunately, people get surveyed way too much.
So, so five hundred, Doug, how much we are paying for this, forty-eight thousand?
No, they're, they're cau, the cost for the survey is fifteen.
Fifteen?
Something, yeah, right around that fifteen thousand number.
Oh, okay.
All in for everything that we're doing with the strategic plan, everything else, is at, is at forty-five, forty-eight thousand.
Okay. And when should we expect the results, like, the, the complete results of this survey?
It will be, it, it, from start to finish, the project is usually four months, uh, so we're probably in month two already at this point, so another two months.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Mindy, I have a quick question, were we gonna use, I was, I was told in the beginning, there was talk of focus groups, appointed and volunteer focus groups, part of this, was that still being looked at?
Yes.
Yes.
Mindy, that's not you. Uh, June twenty-eighth is a date for focus groups.
Okay.
So, we are working with, uh, our stakeholders, we're gonna be reaching out to community members to, uh, start scheduling the focus groups, but that's scheduled for June twenty-eighth.
Perfect, thank you.
Pat?
Yes, I got a question, uh.
You're included.
When, when you, how, how are you targeting these people, throughout the whole village, or, uh, are you in one area?
No, it's throughout the whole village. It's a random sample of all, so, so this firm that we use, Marketing Systems Group, has, you know, has all the, has a database of all the residents in your village, has all, has a database of all the residents in the United States, actually. We say we want, you know, village of Glendale Heights, a random sample, how many, and they, they select the individuals. So it's not biased in any way, uh, they're, you know, we haven't selected certain ind- certain households, it's totally random who gets the survey and who doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Mindy, I have a question for you, um, do your students work on this, these surveys?
We have student workers, we have several student workers, we pay them, um, so they're not actually doing it as part of their coursework or anything like that, they actually work for us, uh, and they help with data entry, they help with, uh, telephone, uh, calls, uh, whatever we need them to do on the survey, they help with, yes, so we do have student workers.
Do they get credit for this?
No, they don't.
They don't?
No, this is.
Now, is this gonna stop when your s- uh, semester ends?
No, they're actually employed by us.
Oh, they are?
By the hour.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions? Dave, anybody? No? All right, Mindy, thank you for, uh, taking your time out and, uh, presenting this, uh, to us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing is for Mr. Peter Passione, Identification Ordinance for Elected Officials.
Testor, I'd like to make a motion to table this, to more information. Uh, the Indemnification Ordinance for Elected Officials.
Second. Second by Mohammed? Okay. Anybody else? No comments? Do we need a roll call on this?
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna.
Table it?
I- it's only for discussion, but it would be more to just, did you wanna just remove it from the agenda?
Let's remove it.
For this time?
Let's remove it this time.
Yeah, so, unless there's any objection, we could just remove it from the agenda.
Okay, no problem. Any objections? None? Okay, it's gonna be removed. Uh, next thing is Center for Senior Citizens Update, Mr. Flint.
Okay, so, uh, last board meeting, I advised you that we were working with our architects, FGM, uh, in addition to the senior center, we received a grant for, through DCO a couple of years ago, they just got funded for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we've been working with our architects on the best way of utilizing that funding. Not pride anybody's surprise, three fifty doesn't go very far when it comes to building big things, or remodeling, for that matter, so, uh, what you see in the, uh, large area is what the senior center is. The items in red to the north of the building is an addition. That addition is for, uh, severely needed storage. Right now, the senior center, the senior center wasn't built or designed with storage in mind. There is zero storage, uh, I should say zero, there's not enough storage there to handle the needs of the senior center and the community room with the hundreds of chairs they have and the tables that are in and out to be set up and put down. Uh, so, we need to have storage there. So, behind the, uh, building, there is, we're looking to build a new addition on the north side of the building behind the senior center. So it won't disrupt the activities of the senior center, it'll be a new addition to the back of it that will connect through current, one doesn't really work, it'll show up through current, um, hallways that are already there, or storage rooms that are already there. It'll provide seven hundred and seventy feet of, uh, storage, square feet of storage space in the back. There'll be two small offices, uh, there that they currently don't have any offices there for the director or any other personnel, the manager, I should say, and a little break room. So, we are looking at that shell of a building with HVAC, with sprinklers, new carpeting throughout the entire senior center, uh, new, I should say, new flooring throughout the entire senior center, some will be carpeting, some will be luxury vinyl tile, new updates throughout, a new sound system in there that they desperately need. All total, if we bid this out today, which we're not, but if we bid this out today, it's in a range of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So, the shell of the building and new flooring. We are gonna save considerable money, uh, on the building of that, 'cause our maintenance guys will handle all the build-out inside that storage room. So our maintenance workers, uh, will do all the carpentry and do all the electric of the interior of this. The contractor, at whatever point, will do all the shell, the HVAC, and sprinklers. We'll handle everything else. We are, the prices that we have today, uh, have a fifteen percent contingency built into each part of it. Fifteen percent for the flooring, fifteen percent for this, fifteen percent for, uh, pretty much every part of this. There's a considerable cost in these numbers that we have for the contingency built in, because nobody knows what numbers are today. I mean, nobody knows what numbers are today. We are not looking to bid this out today. We are looking to, uh, one, ask the board for approval at some point in the future to proceed, and we're looking at spending of, uh, village funds to help to do this project of about three hundred thousand dollars. Right? So, we are looking right now for guidance on that, for the expenditure of that. But we wouldn't bid this out until fall, when hopefully the supply chains come back, and we would be looking at spring of two thousand twenty-three, right when construction season starts again, that hopefully we can, you know, find that contractor who needs to get his first job out, and we can get a better price, and talking to the architects, we're actually looking to be in the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Would be the, my ballpark in my head, uh, where we, I think we should be when it comes to pricing then. Uh, so our expenditure, our expenditure would be two hundred thousand dollars to get the senior center to what they need to get to for the next twenty to thirty years, uh, for storage, for, you know, the building's twelve years old, they need new flooring anyway, they need a new sound system anyway, so, we're gonna have, we need to do that upgrades anyway. Uh, storage is a huge deal, and we need to provide them the storage, and we need to have that building, uh, ready for the next twenty to thirty years. So, we're looking for guidance tonight to proceed with FGM, to start designing and working on better blueprints. This is just a, you know, rough, kinda architectural drawing of that, and, uh, this is kinda what, uh, where we're at. Right? So, we're looking for some guidance on that.
Doug, uh, if, with that expansion, is that gonna block the view in the windows from the salon and, uh?
No, so, it goes from the, on the north side of the building, from the east corner to the bathroom wall.
Oh, okay, so now they're gonna, they're not gonna block that at all?
Nope.
Now, is there enough room for setback?
Yes.
There is?
According to the architects.
Pardon?
According to the architects, there is.
Oh, okay. All right. Mary?
It looks like you're going beyond the building right now, the existing building, looks like you're going east. Will that have anything to do with, like, that area where the tables and?
It, it doesn't, it won't go into the overhang.
It won't.
No, no, it's gonna end at the end of the building.
It's gonna end at the end of the building. All right, I now have another question, now, this was a grant that we received, it's three hundred and fifty thousand, am I correct?
Correct.
How often is this grant available to us?
Uh, we, we applied for this grant years ago, it just got funded. So, I'm gonna say not very often.
All right, well, I just thought I'd-
And certainly not timely.
All right. Thank you.
Does that grant last for a couple of years, or?
Well, we, we-
How does that work?
Keith has to provide them with paperwork and the design plans, and the fact that we are moving forward with the process, and that we'll be, we will be using the funds, and here's our plan for the use of these funds.
All right, thank you.
As soon as this meeting is over tonight, tomorrow, we will contact them, because they are literally at the point where they're waiting for us to say what we're gonna spend that money on.
So you gotta do it right away, otherwise you lose it.
They've been waiting for a few months to get our stuff, just so we could get it put together.
Okay, thank you. Keith, Pat?
No, my only question was, in the, in the back of the building, it slopes-
Mm-hmm.
Down, do the architects know, I mean-
We walked it with them, we took, we went out there with them, uh, they've seen the entire site, uh, they know, they've seen it all. They have the plans, they got our, they have our plots, so-
Okay. Are the architects the same ones that had built, put the building up, or is somebody else?
No, no, it's the same ones who did the police department and all the remodeling around here.
Oh, okay. Anybody else?
Yes, I want to add that we should ask also, you know, um, opinion of senior citizens, you know, what they want, you know? So it's better, you know, they should know that they have, uh, values also, you know.
Well, we need the space, that's the main thing.
Right.
Yeah, but we-
How much space we, do we need? And what senior citizen wants, we should include their opinion also.
Mary?
Yes, just, uh, it might be a foolish question, but is it less expensive to go up rather than out?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, my guess is no.
We can't go up.
We, we talked to the architects originally, and going up was not an option.
Okay.
We can't go up.
All right, just wanted to add.
Yeah, I don't think the foundation's there for it.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? No?
Okay, second thing-
Oh, there's more.
There's always more, Chester. Uh, we have hired one bus driver for the senior center bus.
Oh.
They will be starting probably a week from Monday. Uh, they have some other testing to go through. We are still, uh, I don't know if we're gonna hire a second bus driver right now, one, we're gonna start with one, but we have one that has been hired, and the bus service will be up, uh, the 17th, 16th, Monday the 16th.
Is that gonna be five days a week, or how does it gonna work?
No, the tentative plan is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to one. And they're, the senior center is working with the seniors that took the bus regularly last, and those that are using pace, uh, to, uh, provide them services, and then whomever else wants to use it. They're gonna be working with, uh, senior living areas to ensure that those that need to get to the grocery store, those that need to get doctor appointments, uh, those that need to get to Bingo on Wednesdays, uh, have the ability to get to their appointments.
Now, this bus driver, is he just gonna work Monday, Wednesday and Friday?
Correct.
How about Tuesday and Thursday, you gonna hire a second one, or no?
It's only three days a week right now.
That's it?
Right, so i- if, if, if there's a need for more, and we can hire a second bus driver, we would do that. Right?
Okay.
We have to, you know, we're, we're re-implementing this, so we need to kind of see how it goes, I don't wanna say baby steps, but I don't wanna take giant leaps and hire more people than we need, until we know we need people.
Okay. Mike?
Doug, our bus is prepped for this, right?
Yep.
It's all up and running, ready to go.
So, one of the, uh, nice parts was, uh, one of our mechanics was actually part of the interview process, and actually took, uh, the two applicants on a ride. So, he was there, he explained the whole bus system to them, explained how everything worked. After the interviews, they took the bus back to the shop, and they have done a complete one-over of the bus to make sure all the mechanicals are working, to make sure everything's, uh, on the up and up, so when they go back on the 16th, they'll be ready to go.
Good, good, thank you. Pat?
Very good.
Doug, what, what I would like to see, when they get this bus up and running with the driver, and we have somebody from the senior center go with the person, the driver, to pick up these people, to see how, you know, she would kind of, you know-
Yeah, we could certainly see if they have somebody available to go on the route to make, to, just to, uh, and I will tell you that the bus driver isn't, um, unknown to the seniors.
Oh, okay, well, then that's okay then.
Right. So he's not unknown to the seniors. But, yeah, so, the, the, the bus driver's a good guy.
All right, as long, as long as the seniors know him, and, I mean-
I, I, I'm not gonna say everyone knows him, but I think a lot will.
Well, that, I'm fine with that, Doug. Okay, thank you, Doug.
And then lastly, uh, the, um, senior center committee had their monthly meeting, and just like our banquet hall, our senior center rental of the community room was severely, uh, low. The pricing that we had there was really, really low. Compared to other community rooms of our type, ones in Bartlett and other places, uh, we were, we were $50 to $60 per hour below where they were at. So, uh, the senior center advisory committee, uh, met last week, they approved at the committee part, uh, increases to the senior center rental. Uh, we're still below Bartlett, we're still below the community room pricing in Bartlett. Uh, Monday through Thursday, five to 10, prices are $100 per hour. Friday, five to midnight, they're $125 per hour. Saturday and Sunday, nine to five, they're 100 per hour. Saturday, five to midnight, it's $150 per hour, and then Sunday, five to 10 is $125 per hour. So, this brings us up to where other communities are at, uh, actually below where other communities are at, because we're still below the Oak Room in Bartlett and some other, uh, places, but we were significantly lower than the other rooms, and this is just for the community room rental at the senior center. So I just want to update everybody on that. The committee for the senior center voted on that and already approved it.
Is the commu- community room as large as the others, or are about the same size?
Oh, yeah, the Oak Room in Bartlett's about the same size.
It is, okay. Okay. Anybody have a question? Oh, Pat?
Yeah, and we did, we did raise the, uh, security deposit from 150 to, uh-
300, yes.
So, does that need a board's approval, uh, for that price change, or?
No, this is, this, the committee at the senior center made that recommendation, they made that change. I was just giving advi- advice to the board, and so the residents who are watching know what the increases are.
Okay, so, that should do it.
I have a question for, I have a question for the senior center. Uh, you know, uh, the woman that does the, uh, works in the salon, she had an accident with her hand, and she is still doing the work, though. And we have many people that volunteer. Would that be a problem if a volunteer were to wash the heads, and this way that would eliminate her from putting her sore hand into the water? Do we need permission to, to get a volunteer, uh?
I'm laughing, because the ASME rep is behind me. The answer, the answer is yes.
Yes, what?
We would not be able to have a volunteer, uh, wash hair there.
Oh, we couldn't have a volunteer wash heads?
No.
Union.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I'm happy to kick him out, and we can have another conversation, but-
Doug, he won't go, I guarantee you that. All right, so everybody okay with everything, with the three little items that Doug presented? Okay, uh, next is public comment. Is there any, anyone from the public that would like to address this board? Though it's limited to five minutes per person. Please state your name and address.
I do not need to state my address, it's Christopher Epstein. Let's discuss property tax bills that we probably all got this, uh, week. Uh, I'm glad that, uh, Bill has kept the amount from the village in line, basically, for the most part. The only thing is, we did have a resident come in here, and, um, the part of the bill that went up on me was a school district bill, and this person had said, "Oh, we're in great shape." I'm kind of surprised that I'm seeing such a large increase in the school district, and it's reflective of, you know, things, but I don't like somebody coming and saying one thing, and then seeing a big increase in the, uh, amount to the school, uh, district, District 16. I didn't see too bad of an increase for the other ones, but District 16 had an issue, you know, has that. But the other thing it comes down also to is the cannabis, um, dispensary that we're looking at having in this village potentially. Well, if the school needs more money, and the money from the cannabis doesn't go directly, if it comes into the village, maybe everybody will get a lower and offset the school district's needs for funds. So, I'm, again, proponent, I'm not a pot person, I've, I've never smoked anything in my life, but I would like to see the cannabis go ahead and go forward, and hopefully we can get some revenue within the village to offset the costs that are associated. I don't know what District 15 is, or District 47 is, as far as increases, but that's what I would like to see, uh, with regards to it. Other thing is, I've had some issues addressed this week by your staff on different things, they all did very well. I was a little upset on one thing, because I brought it to their attention, and, uh, then I get bit for it, but it was taken care of, so, uh, I'm glad to see that's, uh, been addressed and taken care of, so, thank you for your time. I know I haven't used all my five minutes, so, I'll, I'll, I'll reserve them.
Kim Darlin, I don't have a problem giving you my address, it's Greenbrier Drive. The hell, Chris.
What do you have, Kim?
Where are we at for the RFP for the golf course?
April 29th was the due date, and no vendors put an RFP in for the banquet hall. We reached out to the vendors who were at our meeting, and they advised that in today's climate right now, we do not know where supply chain issues are at, we don't know what prices are week to week, and we can't staff it, so they decided not to bid. So, I talked to Mayor today, and we need, uh, him and I, and one other person from the board, need to sit down next week and have a conversation about next steps for the, uh, banquet hall and what we're gonna do.
Okay, so we have no idea then. You said we had somewhere in the 20 to 30 range of weddings, um, baby showers that we have to go through, right?
Correct, yes.
We have to do those?
Yes.
But we don't have to, are we taking, are we still taking more?
We are, as if, if those dates are available.
Okay. So, as of maybe the next board meeting, we'll have an idea what's gonna happen with that?
I, I hope so.
Okay. Where are we at with the cannabis?
We have not, sorry, we have not yet received an application from any, uh, distribution facility, I'm sorry, any, uh, distribution facility.
Dispensary.
Dispensary, thank you. So we've talked to them-
I thought we had a couple.
No, so what we did is, we changed the ordinance to allow up to two, one along North Avenue Corridor and one along the Army Trail Road.
Right.
We were approached by one dispensary who expressed interest, and we've had ongoing conversations with them, but they have not yet applied. And what we have had a request for, just, because you'll see it on an upcoming agenda, and I don't want there to be any confusion, is we have received an application for a cannabis infusing facility. Um, so there's no sales tax associated, but it is a cannabis, it will, infusing in the industrial area, so there will be a public hearing in, uh, May 24th about that facility, but that's not a dispensary. So just so if you see it, don't want, there's no confusion.
Okay, but there's no tax revenue with that?
Uh, property tax, actually it's property that has not been on the tax rolls, so it will be added to the tax rolls, so that will be a benefit.
Okay. Rachel, I think this was you. I'm still looking for the snowplow for my subdivision. I think I spoke about that two weeks ago, and you said you'd have an answer?
I need to look into that for you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, what time do we start, uh, what time do we start street sweeping?
First of April.
April? What time?
It's, uh, eight o'clock in the morning, I believe.
So then 6:45 is unacceptable?
Well, that's not what the posted signs say, but sometimes they do go out there.
At 6:45? What time do the workers start?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, so 6:45 is not in their work time?
It could have been a contractor, I would need to find out for you. We did have some problems with our own, um, sweeper, and we did have our contracted sweeper coming, so it could have been them that came in earlier.
Okay, is somebody gonna check on that?
I will.
Thank you.
Can you just give me a bit more detail, what was that?
Um, I pissed somebody off at the last board meeting, so that very next Friday, they decided to clean my street at 6:45 a.m. I live on Greenbrier.
Yeah, I got that. So what, what week was that?
Last week, or two-
Last week?
Two board meetings ago.
Two board meetings.
I'm sorry, two weeks ago.
Yep.
It'll be like the sixth. Okay, got it.
And actually, now that you say that, it was not our street sweeper.
It wasn't our sweet sweeper.
It was not our regular-
No.
-street sweeper.
No, we don't start, we don't-
What days does your-
Starts at 6:30.
We do Fridays.
Fridays?
Yeah, we do Fridays.
Yeah.
And I thought that our sign in our neighborhood said 8 a.m.
It does.
And that, okay.
Yeah.
So 6:45 really isn't.
Let me, let me look into it, because it may not have even been our sweeper, it may have been a contractor sweeper that was out there doing something else.
Correct.
So let me, let me find out what's going on.
Okay, please do.
Yeah, our employees don't start at 6:30.
Right, that's what I just asked.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Jack's?
Chester.
Is some sort of restaurant over off of 80, off of Army Trail?
Jack's Pub.
Jack's Pub? Do the pubs get to have their garbage picked up at a certain time, 3 o'clock in the morning?
I don't, I don't hear any garbage-
Is that you, Chester, is that your-
That's my district, I don't hear any garbage.
Okay, well, I have, I have pictures-
Sometimes I hear them around 6:30. I hear ba- uh, cans being banged.
So, there's, there's no, no activity, I'm trying to say this right away, no commercial activity, garbage, anything, construction is supposed to start prior to 7 a.m.
That's what I thought, okay.
They, there are times where I, I guess, where the private contracted garbage services for dumpsters, uh-
Right.
Don't abide by that, and they go through industrial parks at different times.
Is Jack's an industrial park?
No, it's a retail-
Is that what it's considered?
No, it's, well, it's a retail place. It's a retail strip mall.
Okay.
Very small.
I've never been there.
Kim, your time is just about up, you got about 30 more.
Okay, that's all I got!
Pardon?
That's all I got!
All right, thank you. Have a good week. Bill?
Joanne, just for my adoration here, if we do get a, an application for a dispensary, how long after we get the application could we expect the state to give their approval?
Actually, I'm gonna defer to Chief Pappas on that.
The state will do it before they can even come here, so they have to get their license before they can even, uh, come to the village, so we'll, they'll, we'll know their state license before it all.
Okay, currently, what type of time delay is that now?
They were supposed to give them out, from what I understand, there is a holdup in court right now, and that would be the answer to Kim's question, so we're waiting for that to pass through, and then the, uh, dispensary that we're looking at, it'll get done. They're actually looking at a place in town, and they were supposed to close two, two, three weeks ago, and then this litigation came up, so, we'll see. It should be coming shortly, though.
Then, once the application is submitted to us, and there will be a public hearing before the plan commission, and then it will be sent to you for final action, so that's a two-month process, two to three-month process.
All right, thank you.
Chief, that delay in a court, is that because of Glendale Heights, or is it something else?
No, no, there was a, um, it was a big dispute.
Action against the state.
Yes, yes.
Regarding the distribution of the licenses.
Against the state?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There was multiple licenses, there was a 200-plus.
Yeah, it's how they're getting distributed, who gets them, and so it's a big, big lawsuit going on right now. going on right now.
But that'll be a while then, knowing how the state works.
Nobody knows.
All right, thank you. All right, now we go to other, and I'm gonna go first. Republic, waste. When Tish was here last time, or on video, she claimed that we're supposed to get postcards sent. There were no cards sent. Who gets this? Joanne? No?
Rachel.
Oh, Darcy.
Mm-hmm.
There was not one postcard sent.
Let me follow up with Tish and find out.
And there's only seven signs in my district. Now, Wednesday was the pickup, my entire block had no garbage out on last Wednesday. I didn't have mine out 'cause the thing was half-empty, we just had it taken Friday. But today, the neighbors got garbage out, it's Friday. Go figure, the cards weren't sent. People don't look at some signs, you know that.
Darcy.
And the signs aren't English.
Excuse me?
I received the card.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't get no cards-
Not no cards in your-
In District Five.
Let me follow up with Tish.
That's why all the garbage is out today. And it'll be out there all weekend unless they send, send a special truck.
We'll contact them and see if they can make a sweep of your area tomorrow.
They'll have to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got on Republic, uh, Mohammed, you got source?
Yeah, Doug-
Or status, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, what's the status about the stipends, rules and regulations, I believe I asked for, that what get paid, what do not get paid, where we are on-
There was a committee formed-
Okay.
On stipends.
All right, and do we get the recommendations from the committee?
I was not on the committee.
I was on the committee, I gave the mayor the results of the committee that I got from Mr. Pappas, our chief.
Yeah.
He voted, uh, not voted, uh, surveyed the other committees and we were just about in the middle, we're not high, we're not low, we're near average.
No, basically what I'm asking is what get paid, what do not get paid, because I'm seeing, I need to know what, uh, elected official can charge and what doesn't, and I-
Yeah, we have a policy on that, I, I thought the committee, I, I haven't seen a report on the, on the committee, but have you guys, was there an update to, okay? So, the policy that we have is still the policy that's in place when it comes to what's allowed and what's not allowed.
I have a copy here, I gave every board member one today-
Yeah.
And, uh, it was done by Strino Romello and Derek, uh, Durkin. Was paid as a stipend, was paid as a, I must have left it. You guys should have a copy with you.
Yes, I, I-
I left it in the office.
I have my own copy. And I believe everybody should have, you know.
Oh, here, I got, I got it right here.
So, are we following these guidelines in approving the stipends?
So, there really isn't an approval, if you read the bottom of the page, it, it, it clearly states that the person submitting the stipend is responsible for the, uh, for the stipend.
Yeah, because the reason I'm bringing this is, on January seventh, the village paid Mr. Coker forty-three hundred dollar, January twenty-first, eight hundred dollar for a stipend. And I'm just wondering why it's, this hefty amount is being paid, I mean, we are all elected officials, I see other trustees' stipend, we do not go that, I, I understand, he charged fifty dollar for that, but what kind of rules and regulations we have, like, you know, and I, if, if, if there, if this is like on a goodwill that, you know, you, I wanna change that because it needs to be approved by the board, or just like accounts receive, payable, the one which we get on every board meeting, and for that, Peter, what should we do? Do we need to put an ordinance or, or a motion, uh, if we want to change, that change by the board?
Let me explain over here, you know, I have list, you know, and those trustees and what I have received, you know, there are certain, you know, uh, those should not be paid, those are paid, you know, and I have one, Bill Smith, he got paid twenty, those twenty time, those should not be paid, you know.
For what?
Uh, I have list, you know.
You said he should have got paid, what was the reason?
No, no, it should not have been paid, you know, twenty, he got twenty time or, I don't, it's not his intent, what I believe, you know, Mr. Smith's intent or any other trustee, what, what is, uh-
He got paid for, for what?
Uh, he, uh, those, twenty, twenty time, he should not be paid, and Mr. Siddiqui, he does not come outside, you know, in active, village activity, except board meeting, so he was paid two time, which he should not be paid.
Two times, meaning fifty dollar.
For what?
For what, explain, please, don't just, don't put allegations, explain it in details.
Not allegations, it's not, I'm not-
Yes.
Listen, I'm not accusing you, I'm not alleging anything, this is a list.
Mr. Coker, can I see that list?
Yeah.
Trustee Siddiqui, to answer your question, if there's any change to the policy that the board wants-
Don't get warm, you know, don't get hot.
At the board's direction-
Can I talk to the attorney, please?
We can approve and, we can present an ordinance to make any changes that the board feels are necessary.
So, if I make an emotion right now, no, or-
You can't, you can't make any motion.
Uh-huh.
It's just basically we would, if you wanted to go further, I guess it could be put on the COW for further discussion.
Yes.
And then, um, we could take action as an agenda item, without it being an agenda item-
Uh-huh.
We can't take any action.
So, can we start that, how can I start that process?
Um, I would talk to Doug about wanting to-
On the COW for next board meeting.
Okay, so, yeah, we need to work on that, because I'm seeing taxpayers' money going for what, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of money, and I have all the, all the details here, if any citizen wants to see that, they can contact me, I've been working on this and that's why I want, and the other thing, Doug, I want is, um, I want this, you know, because these are the taxpayers' money, they are paying for that, we are, we should be held accountable by, by our taxpayer, uh, I want these to be published on our website, so they know where we are spending this money, what we are charging. Is this something which we can do, I, I mean, uh, Mr. Peter, can we do that, or is this something which, because this is a public information, correct, or is it, or is it-
That's a policy decision, it's, it's, it's the expenditure of public funds, it's your website.
Yeah, I mean, it should, it should be transferred on that.
Free to put whatever information on the website you want.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem putting my things online, that what I charge for.
Well, if the board, if the board agrees to that, then we would do it.
As part of the policy, but it would need to be a board decision.
Correct.
Yeah, so, everyone knows, you know, who's spending what.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I, every, you know-
Bill, Bill, I looked at, uh, your, your copy that, uh, Mr. Coker had, now, one thing I just noticed, tree lighting ceremony, that's included in your annual stipend, you shouldn't have charged us for that.
This list is everybody's charging, you know, this list.
There's a few things on there that shouldn't have been charged.
No, listen.
I'll, he's got a copy of this now, I don't know if he had one before, but he's got a copy now.
This is, uh, Mr., uh, I have copy, uh, Mr. Bill Smith, I don't accuse him, you know, it is inevitably what I believe, you know, not, no intention, but there are certain, we don't know, you know, so there are some, so we can, uh, program in such a way that when we, someone, uh, claims, you know, stipend, so we should have developed computer, so it should say, yes, it is paid, it's not paid, you know.
And that's why I want, I want this to-
Number one, excuse me, let me, uh, excuse you, number one, I will recommend this and I appreciate we should put this on the internet website, you know, and we will also put, you know, those contract, you know, which are given to anybody, not just one person, to anybody, that this is the contract we gave to that person, this is amount, it was bid or it was not bid, so everybody, people should have right, you know, to know where their money is going, you know, who's paying what, both should go together.
Keith, I'm not Keith, Doug, I gave you a copy of this a long, long time ago, this is what we go by.
No, I understand that.
Some abuse it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna say anybody abuses it.
No, it's not abused.
Uh, the bottom of the first page there, you know, the, the person submitting the form is responsible for what's on the form, right, it's not for me to tell somebody whether they should get a stipend or not.
Right.
So-
It's the honor system.
Actually, you know, we should develop, you know, uh, computer programming, you know, so what is paid, not paid, when we feed in the computer, it should say is paid or not paid, easy way, you know.
Mr. Coker, come to my office, we'll discuss this.
Yeah, sure.
All right, Pat.
I, I, I got a great idea. Why don't we just eliminate the whole thing?
Eliminate, that's fine.
In that way, in that way, we don't have to discuss this at every board meeting-
Right.
How much everybody's making.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't care, I don't take anything, so I don't care, I mean, let's eliminate it.
Yeah, I am in favor of it.
I am in favor as well.
Yeah.
And there'll be no more, there'll be no more arguing, fighting, arguing.
That's good, you know, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike?
So, the next meeting, we can talk about this, Doug?
Sure, okay, we can, we can talk about it next, I, I, I've got it on the agenda for next board meeting, okay.
Good, thank you.
Bill? Okay, on the forums, the request for stipend payment, there is a column that says description slash purpose of meeting. And Co-, uh, President Coker's thirty-seven meetings, sixteen pages, see attached. There is a listing here of the event, the place, the time, the date, there is no reason given for whatever stipend he is claiming here on any of his stipend requests, there's no reason given. What is, okay, governmental agency partnership committee meeting, what is that for? I have no idea.
I believe-
If that form were filled out correctly, there would be a description of why that is being requested, like, I go to meetings, I, apparently, from what Chester's saying, tree lighting ceremony should not be covered, okay, then we will deduct that, I will return that money, but if you're asking to play by the rules, you play by the same rules as everybody else, and apparently you're not.
I agree.
You have to put a description, what, the reason of the call, reason of the, the visit, you have, I do it on mine.
Yeah, and, uh, gap meeting is meeting by different agencies, government agencies, they come on the, the course, you know.
The gap meeting, I know about that, but the other meetings that they're talking about.
I don't, I don't have to give description for that, you know.
Sorry, George.
What is that for, you should know, everybody should know, you know, what's that?
That's just one item, but it gets better.
You know, I mean, now we should work on-
Mohammed.
Eliminating, you know, this, you know, period.
So, if I understand you correct, Bill, you wanna return that money?
I will return the money, yes.
And I, so, as, as a human being, we all do mistakes, so, I think, Mayor, you should also return the money which you have, as Bill mentioned, because I'm seeing a lot meeting with Tariq Siddiqui, I really don't know who is Tariq Siddiqui and what kind of benefit it will bring it to the city, so, can we go over this and whatever the money we collected, which we shouldn't be, it's by mistake or whatever, we should be paying back?
Yeah, yes.
If we agreed on, we agreed on that?
Agreed, yes.
Okay, great, so, let's, so Doug, if you can, you know, take a look at and see-
I will, I will, I will review-
Yeah.
The, the stipend payments and, uh, actually, I'll get with George, he was on the original committee.
Yeah.
And we'll review the stipend payments and we'll make a determination if it meets the policy or doesn't meet the policy.
Number one, we need to determine what has been, what was valid, what was invalid.
Yeah, that, that's-
Number one, correct that, number one.
Yes.
Number two, then we should work to eliminate entirely, so, there should be no, uh, you know, time waste on this little stuff, you know, nobody should get anything, you know, they go to meeting or not.
Okay.
Yeah, and number three, we also want that trustee should have minimums, some meetings, you know, it's not someone is not attending any meeting and say, oh, I'm, I'm cleaning, so he or she, it's her or his responsibility to have some meetings, you know, which are mandatory, you know, number three, that.
Mr. Coker, you met with Rajah, the senator, or you talked to him over the phone, what was that about?
Uh, I went to his, uh, meeting in person, not on the phone.
Why, were you invited or you just went on your own?
I don't go on my own. I'll give you one example, a few days ago, I went to one Villa Park, uh, uh, party, dinner, whatever you can say, at that time, I was invited by five different organization, but I chose one and I went there.
All right.
Yeah, I do not go uninvited, period.
Anybody else has this, anybody else has something to say? Nothing, okay, the next thing is, Michaelite, comments.
Thank you, Chester. Um, let me read this. All right, um, Mayor Coker?
Yes.
The last board meeting on the twenty-first of April, during a discussion on committee members, you called trustee Pojek a racist. I, along with the other board members, condemn this remark and we are asking you for a formal apology to trustee Pojek.
I, I do apologize, I shouldn't have said that, but there were certain, certain circumstances, but I don't want to go into detail, I do apologize from Mr. Pojek.
I will not accept your apology.
Okay.
That is my eighty-four, eighty-four years, you're the first one in my life ever told me that.
I, I do not want to go into detail, there are certain incident-
Guys?
Took place and Siddiqui called, you know, it's not his domain, so I, no, no, I, talking about that there are certain incident by trustees-
Can I finish?
Your own daughter called me a racist.
Okay, 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 just-
Go ahead, Pat, Mike.
Calm, calm, okay, good.
Okay.
Hi, obviously, this is an inflammatory thing to accuse another person of and with no proof. Uh, we as the board have a duty to ensure that no board member is acting in a manner that degrades the credibility of this board. I believe this statement, I believe this statement and statements you have made in the past to others, um, are violations of our village policy three oh five, which is sexual harassment, harassment and discrimination policy. Also, you, you, the president, on several occasions have publicized, public, public, I can't even say it, publicly stated, you have issues with the stipends paid to our village clerk, Marie Schmidt. I would like to ask the village attorney to investigate whether the stipend paid to village clerk, Marie Schmidt, are, are legal and have been authorized by the board. I'm asking my fellow, my fellow board members to support this, giving direction to having our village attorneys conduct an investigation into the, into the comments made by President Coker and investigate the stipend payment made to the village clerk, Marie Schmidt. So, can I get you guys to support me on that, on that?
If I can interrupt for one second.
Here I wanted to add, you know, I have talked with village attorney, he's going to start investigation.
Mr. Coker, attorney wants to say something.
Yeah. I was, I was just gonna say, it'd be a conflict of interest for us to do it.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause we represent, you know, the board in general-
Okay.
And the village in general, um, it would, i- if at your direction you wanted to appoint a special, have us appoint someone else to investigate another law firm-
Yes.
Uh, which we have done in the past, um, if that's your direction, that's what we can do.
Yes. Yeah, 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 I have talked with Mr. Don yesterday, Mr. Don and what's his, Durkin, what's his name, attorney?
Yes.
We have talked and they are going to start investigating into that matter, that stipend is valid or invalid, they are going to start, you know.
Pat, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry, I'm not even running the meeting, I'm sorry.
What, what are we looking for? I mean-
Looking-
In this investigation, I, what, what do you, what are, what are we looking for?
Well, I wanna make sure, one, um, with Maria and the payments, that, that she, the[1753.13] the stipend that she receives, was and is, um, legally done through what our, our, um, policy states, then that's one, and then, um, as far as any of the, um, the allegations against others and improper comments made to others, and actions to others would be investigated, from many of things that I have heard, it was just, um, it has, it's caused a ripple, and I'm, I just wanna get past all this, so we can clear this up and get on with working as a board.
And I want also, it should be investigated, you know, Ms., uh, trustee Siddiqui has definitely given statement in the previous, he called me highway robber, robbery, you know, no, no, it should be investigated, not laughing, you know, it should be either, you know.
And also, Peter, can you, can we add in that, Mr. Light, can we add in that list the, the cricket contract, uh, thing, the whole scenario of that, which receiving a check from Mr. Meta, and the accusations he is putting, since I get elected, that, oh, he's the, uh, relative of Mr. Barry, although I abstain from voting, so we need to investigate all this, because in every board meeting, he bad-mouthed on me and my family, so I'm done with all those allegations, so he is just talking about the highway robbery, because it's the, Mr.-
You said what you said?
I know what I said, because I said this, because the, the stipend money you are charging to the city is-
Done, you know, it's done.
No, it's not done, I'm just gonna-
All right.
When I'm speaking, don't interrupt me.
All right.
Yeah, so, uh, add that one also.
Well, can I just ask for clarification, then? Um, the main one I understand is the payment to the village clerk.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, number two is basically general, generally, public comments made by elected officials, generally?
Yes.
Is that what, is that, that would include exactly what you're saying, Kyle?
Just the, the, the remarks he made last time, and then the, you know, he openly called us corrupt, to be more clear to you, he called us corrupt, he called the previous administration corrupt, all those allegations, look at the last board meetings, in every board meeting, he's accusing either ex-mayor a corrupt person, or our former secretary a corrupt, or, or every other person, so we need to investigate-
Peter, you'll get a clarification on that?
Okay.
Can I, can I make, uh, just a suggestion there, 'cause if you investigate too many things, you're gonna get nowhere with too many things, can we focus it on payments to the village clerk, and any other items that come up during the course of that, of that investigation? Whether it's related or unrelated, if it does come up, then they can take the investigation further on any other particular allegations that may come up during the investigation.
Yeah, so I want the cricket thing in that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Pat.
But I, I, I would need to, is that the consensus of, of the board? We're not, we can't take a vote?
Pat's still going here, so.
Okay. You're looking for a, a complete investigation?
Yes.
Is that what it, that, is that what?
Yeah, we want that-
A complete investigation of whatever been going on.
The allegations and all the-
Complete investigation.
Yeah, the allegations.
And complete investigation how that cricket contract is given to Barry, you know, also, now, now you're laughing, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
That's an investigation of whether it violates village policy?
Yes.
Village ordinance?
Yes.
Or, you know, state or whatever other statutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Want more?
All right, Pat. No, like I was saying, if you, if you give too much to investigate, you investigate nothing.
Yeah, no, no, you're fine.
What are you gonna say? Pat?
Pat?
I, I, I just wanna say one thing, uh, the last board meeting, racist, that's a nasty word to use, uh, in today's world, everybody's a racist when you don't agree with somebody, somebody's a, a different personality, you don't vote for the same person that somebody likes, you're a racist, that, that, that is no word for any village official, whether it came out of a fit of anger, or maybe intent, I, I don't know what it was, but there is no word for anybody to use to another person on the board that represents the village. If, if, everybody looks at this village right now, it, all diverse, look at all our businesses in town, all diverse people, I mean, we help everybody in this town, and we have never, ever been called racist, we've been called a lot of names, but not, but not a racist, for the, for the amount of people, I mean, I'm gonna go out with this, because every board member here had at least a minimum of two, three calls from residents that are really upset, and they support the board.
I had fifty of them.
They support the board, because there is no word to use, and, on, on TV, eh, to somebody, that actually, I, I may be stretching, I may be stretching it a little bit, but I mean, that's, that's kinda harms a person that, that is being attacked, and, and it, it's not fair, I mean, the, the lady told me on the phone that why I didn't, why didn't I say something when that happened, and I, I kinda was in shock, because I never thought that would ever come out, so, on that note, I'm done.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanna add, uh-
All right, Mohammed.
Uh, since, um, you know, this, I don't wanna hear this word raised in our, in our village, I've been living here for the last twelve years, never in my life, I, I mean, in my residency here, I ever felt that, you know, I, I was treated different by, by any village employer, or, or any policeman, or, or any, and I know Chester for the last, I believe, more than three years, four, this is four years, uh, uh, since I've been working at the Property Enhancement Committee, and Chester could be anything but racist, he is a straight talker, he may be blunt, but he, he, he talks from his heart, and when I heard word racist from our mayor, I could not hold myself, and that's where I say that, you know, he, I condemn those words, I totally, Mr. Coker, this is my humble request to you-
I don't want to listen to you, you know, I do not want to listen to you, he's here, he can talk on his behalf, you know.
Do not divide this town, do not-
You are not his attorney, listen, you are not his attorney, you stop it.
I'm gonna end this meeting in another minute, I'll let you guys chat up now.
I don't want to listen to you, you know.
Coker.
You are hypocrite.
Bill Smith, you've got something to say, and then we're gonna end this meeting.
We've gotta realize that what we say up here has a lot further carry than just the surroundings here. My son and grandsons were watching a rebroadcast of village meeting when, uh, my wife was threatened with arrest, and my grandson turned to my son and said, do you mean the police are gonna actually arrest grandma? That's something he's gonna remember for a long time, so, things that come out of our mouths extend a lot further than just the audience here.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Martado?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion is, this meeting is adjourned.